Yes.
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
There you go. This is yours.
Uh huh.
Geez, you didn't have to break it first.
God.
We have anybody online, Josh?
Okay, now, we're gonna continue with the playing board.
Rotation every four months?
Yeah.
Mine's ending. Who's going in in April?
I gotta find a designate me.
Bill. In April. Danny in August.
Yep, me in December.
Yeah.
Somebody said something about jumping on the CIPC?
Yeah, I approached Sly and asked if he'd be amenable to us switching. So I would take my role on EDAC and I would take his on CIPC.
Okay.
When does EDAC meet?
Mondays at five.
Yeah, but it got changed, didn't it? Usually it's the second Monday.
They're meeting next week, I believe.
Yeah, I think they pushed it off till next Monday.
Do you know you can make CIPC at 1:00 PM on a Monday afternoon?
I might have to adjust things a little bit.
Let's adjust it.
Let's adjust it, yeah.
They're pretty easygoing.
Oh.
So you're saying the 26th? Is he there?
Yes, this month. No, it'll be the 27th, wouldn't it?
Oh, 27th, I'm sorry.
Usually, it would be the second Monday of the month.
So flexible are they?
I don't know why they changed it. Oh, what? Why, did you want to change it?
No, no.
Oh. They might be, they might be open to another day.
Oh, right.
For whatever reason, these past two months, they've...
Floated around a little.
Yeah. Yeah, so next month, it would typically be on the 10th.
Okay.
Okay, now, what about the meeting minutes?
Make a motion that we approve the regular meeting minutes of March 8th?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion, we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded regarding the consent agenda. Any additions?
No, sir.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public input. Hearing none? Well, go with Chief Goul and your point.
Hello, evening, chief. You have two items tonight?
Yes, two. Three items. A quarter, two quarters. So we're looking to replace Squad One goes. And actually, Squad One is out on the CIPC under schedule. But Squad One, we put a car away. And and that would get moved back into rotation. So we're actually replacing Squad Three, which has over 170,000 miles. Squad One actually has at least 1,000 miles. It's only almost $28,000. And Car One is a new vehicle, you know, it gets shared in the most. So you put the most mileage on it, and it's almost 70,000 miles at this point. So probably by the time the vehicle is ready to put service done, put 9,000 or 10,000 miles. So I'm close to that, but so looking for that, Squad One and Michael folks in in crisis, you know, getting a car updated, outfitted, whether actually, so Squad Two could be used as a trade-in. I'm just still waiting on a trade-in. You know, trying to pick some pictures and send over to their dealership. See, just like when I put this, where they were, JBLs are, could be sold. The units that are, we can get new services, these are the
You looking at a Tahoe?
Yeah, a Tahoe, 2000, 2000 one three Tahoe.
You look at any other vehicles for that?
Um, no, but the actual Suburbs or the Yukon, Yukons, they can't or Yukon, they can't really touch the price. The price of this vehicle, it's considered a special services vehicle or fleet vehicle. So these Tahos are very good, could set up with wiring, wiring required for rental, and a brand of brain package. They use 3D MS5 at least. And they're very kind of set up for that, so we need Yukons that we can get regular, like passenger vehicle, $20,000 one, over 15 inches. And they're not set up as complete, they're not set up. Actually, better deal to go with the value.
Questions?
The Squad Three, we already replaced with the pickup truck. So it fell off of the CIPC. So I think what we need to be doing is replacing the older one of Squad One or Squad Two. Because we're not adding another vehicle.
No, right, so actually technically, we're replacing Squad One, so.
Okay, but then Squad One right now either goes away along with Squad Three. Because if we just get rid of Squad Three, we're we've just put the squads back on again. We replace Squad Three with the pickup truck.
Right, so my car will go back, in 2016, will go back into rotation. So we're gonna eliminate Squad Three.
Right, but we're adding another one.
Squad in East, and we're gonna have Squad Here, and we'll have Mine. So you want to get rid of Two?
Yep, I mean Squad Three, we were just gonna use because if we had to put any money in it, if you remember, we're gonna get rid of it. So are we gonna go down that path with the next one? Or are we gonna put it back in the CIPC rotation, or?
The Squad?
Yeah.
If you're gonna replace, I can't see replacing Squad One, 170,000 miles. I mean, get rid of Two, squad Mine and replace Squad One. So we can get those, once you get rid of Squad Three, those are all that.
How about Squad Two?
We don't have Squad Two. Who's Squad Two?
Didn't we have a Squad Two?
Squad One.
Maybe that was when Squad Three was.
Remember Spalding, please, sir?
Squad Three is down here, Squad One is over there.
Okay. So Squad Two was when we did that, we got the pickup truck, basically?
Hmm. I don't know. That was to replace Squad Three, then we kept Squad Three.
All right.
So this is so.
I just don't know why it was called Squad Three if we never had a Two.
So the CIP, they authorized $90,000 for 2023, that's why I know, so.
Well, it isn't that they authorize it, it's that we're putting the money away for the worst-case scenario. So the other thing, I would argue that maybe we should wait for the end of the year when the EMS committee comes back with their report. We'll see where we're going.
Well. I mean, obviously, vehicles, we do replace eventually. So we hang on for too long, and then we are, so then we go to pricing repairs.
I'm supposed to leave that one, ordering every day, hold on, hold on, we order it when it's in service.
Actually, in service, that's just seven months. You come and get it, and you tough it in, and you get radios in, and you get the box ordered. And, you know, these are limited, so we've been moving, actually, the older one for us right now, covering, you know, demo code a little bit naturally. Well, because in Hampshire, we, you know, a lot of items get approved during the month back in town, meeting budgets and so forth, that's why there's a lot of meeting party this month. Back in mutual aid, it's getting some of the things I do. So yeah, I'm talking about them over there, and mostly, they didn't happen the past few years. Because of
Chips.
Chips and whatever you need, and all kinds of stuff.
If we push it back to the end of the year, we're gonna get another, a newer year model Two, you know, it'll be 2024.
Bill?
I'll make the motion that we approve it, and then it can be discussed and well, the motion as presented, second.
Good, motion made and seconded. Further discussion, hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Right?
No.
Okay.
Next is the rest of tools with several quotes. Actually, got three quotes for three different manufacturers. And they actually have a fourth quote on a demo model, which is maybe a year or a year as well, and that usually demonstration for training purposes. Which I don't think will be up for us, because the tool comes, for warranty, fully guaranteed, it's gonna be serviced and tracked for us. The only thing, you know, from a brand model, we may uncover stuff, so that's not a problem. So I think it's a, you know, significant savings for new tools. For a demo, I guess it's a bit worth it, but it's still staying yard, still, the way it's modeled, what they have up there. And I guess it's just, I mean, savings, everything new, we're gonna use to use for bonding brackets and so forth. So I think it's pretty good, well, there are no risks to it for us.
I don't actually want to think about it, so I prefer to do it. We tried to get them six years ago, I think. Center company was gonna donate them, same idea, the use of hydraulics. We used them, they were fantastic tools, they're better than gasoline-powered, even more powerful, so.
Yeah, I mean, this probably, you know, they're big ones, and six hundred and they're, they're, so the hydraulic tools, you know, kind of traditional, they're hydraulic power unit, mostly not a gas leak. And then you have the twin lines, which will force the pressure up the tools. And these don't, they also, basically, these companies don't excel, the line, you know, some of my tools, they sell, you gotta, you don't, with the line, batteries. So, which is great for storage, great for operation. And it's time, Mars, our tools are old, so maybe, again, the parts, so you want anywhere, wanting to charge.
Is this what you were saying? Yeah, six years ago. I'm in favor, I'm in favor of buying the demos.
Yeah, okay. So that's what, that's what I was gonna say, these are, they're not, I guess they're technically used, but they're really demos?
Correct, and they were used, they're used by the man, by the distributor, by FireMatic. So they weren't, you know, used by departments, you know, whatever, they were using demonstration purposes for selling, likes of training, so they would obviously be by capable people that understood, so, you know, they're not using them, yeah, these things are new stores. But again, like I said, it's no risk for us, you know, by being full warranty. So we're not buying something, some of the new stuff without warranty. It's always a company who pull back for the warranty, and so I think it's a very good deal.
And what's the procedure with the batteries? Are they, are they, what's the length of time for the warranty?
Oh, the batteries.
Are they interchangeable, or?
Yeah, they're, I'm not sure if the warranty is on value, you know, the tools, when they charge on a regular basis, I think, probably eventually, they need to get it in place, you know, get it out, or, I don't know if they develop a memory, like, you know, to all tools, or, that was some issues that some of the contractors had, I guess, you know, if they charged too much, but I think that's been resolved. So there aren't too much problems with the batteries.
And replacement batteries are readily available?
Yeah, in fact, we're gonna get some extra batteries.
And you're gonna run it on AC power in a pinch, too, right? Plug it in?
These aren't, no, they don't convert to AC power, they're just batteries.
Really?
There's no conversion.
They used to.
Yeah, they did.
Used to plug in the thing and then plug bad in, so.
Yeah, but now it's the battery is still reliable, you know.
There you go. I know, I'll make the motion as written, second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Further discussion, hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Nominations.
I make a motion that we approve the nomination of William Goul as Deputy Forest Fire Warden.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, it's going to a point, William Goul as the Deputy Forest Fire Warden. Further discussion, hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion that we that we approve the following nominations, as listed, with the exception that Sly will take my place on the Economic Development Advisory Committee for three years.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded.
All in favor?
Well, one minor, Gus, Bruce Gohean, that put in for two years on CIPC, but three years for rail trail, kind of changed the vote from three to two, so it should be three years on for rail trail advisory committee.
So you change them both to three?
They were three, it's changed to two. So it should be three for rail trail, two for CIPC.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. Further discussion, hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Where does EDAC meet?
Uh, Tahoe.
Now, we're on number eight.
Make one, one more, one more motion, I guess. Which would be 7B. Is that where I switch with Sly?
Oh, no, we already did that.
In the beginning.
Your organization.
Yeah. Oh, we did, okay, all right.
Because that's like a ex officio, I don't know, I don't know, it's the EDAC is a little more unofficial than just the.
What, want me to turn the clock ahead? Josh, you didn't wait long enough. Jeez, you could've gone another five minutes.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna go to new business there, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I'll do number nine. Consideration of new business.
This is the inspection procedure for properties on assistance that we've talked about many times, that we're getting to fruition. So we'd ask that, spend your legal review staff, it's gonna be, like we talked about, a little bit of a learning curve, and might have to modify this, to learn what its issues are, we need to get it started.
Questions?
Michael, what is the Senate, the Senate's, the failure of a property to meet, what does that mean?
Which page is that in the document?
It's on page 71. Does that, does that mean that somebody's in the property as a tenant, and they're applying for assistance, the property doesn't meet our qualifications, but the tenancy can continue?
Can you read the sentence together?
Yep, it's the third, third one up, third paragraph up. The failure of a property to meet the town's housing standards. It's right underneath the bullet points.
Oh.
I'm just asking if, if it means that somebody's there as a tenant, they're qualifying for assistance, they can stay there even though the property doesn't meet?
I think it means if someone qualifies for assistance, whether their housing qualifies or not, they will still qualify. So if we can't get them to a state where the place they are currently is up to the standards, my result is moving them to a different property, but it won't impact their qualification, if they still qualify.
Okay, but, okay, so we're talking the same thing. So somebody who is there, and we've determined the property doesn't meet the qualif, doesn't meet, what do we do, what's our practice?
Ideally, we'll work with the landlord to resolve the issues, if we got a timely manner and everything, or the school, or the problematic, and is, okay, we've ran into the landlord with the concerns, and they, they said, oh, yeah, I'll get to them, or they say, no, I'm not gonna do it. So that's when we get into a little bit of the, okay, now, now, we're in such a tight housing market. So ideally, we'll try to find them another location, but hopefully landlords will cooperate.
Do we take any liability if they stay there and they're injured as a result? Or is the liability all by the owner?
I would think the liability would be less, because we're actively working to try to make it better, as opposed to right now, which is not quite covering our eyes, but trying to be a little more proactive, so.
Folding the money. If we're withholding the money aspect of it.
Eventually.
They're still there, I mean, the person's living there, they they're asking for assistance, but they they're not gonna get it until it's up to snuff.
Eventually, that's an option, Chairman, yeah.
As of the end of the year.
Maybe in the implementation part, sort of policy, that may not be supposed to stay.
What do we need?
Motion to approve the policy effectively for first.
Make that motion? Yeah, no, I made that motion.
Second.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded. Further discussion, hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Perfect timing, can you believe it? Holy cow.
We've got apparently three exemptions, expenditures, and disputed funds. I'm not gonna read the whole point.
Yes, sir.
Is anybody online, Josh?
All online.
I'm gonna stop.
All right, you want a motion to accept?
Yes.
Close of the public here.
Yeah, that's right, you want to close it, public?
We will close.
The one that you didn't open? Okay.
It was implied, yes.
It was implied.
Yeah, it was. It does affect those, that's one thing for the, the others too, though.
Make a motion that we accept the unanticipated funds, as listed, A, B, and C.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. To accept the unanticipated funds, A, B, and C. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Did that, I did that.
What's that?
Just talking myself.
Old business.
I just put this on there, basically as a reminder that we had previously discussed meeting with Mr. Lambert from HDMT regarding the Brookout ski limit issue, and he has a Wednesday conflict, basically through March and April, and I think he met today, but he was able to do next Wednesday, when he had not planned to meet. So to try to hopefully get this course of resolution, one way or another, although that's, I know you're in there, and that's, that would be next week at least, to think about it.
Sure.
I will make.
Okay.
You wanna?
That's right.
Bill and I will be here.
Mr. Chairman. To be. Well, this is great that you're ducking out on this one. My God, you know how many people are gonna be here?
Oh, I'm sure. He's organizing them.
By the way, how's your eye?
It's not good. I wouldn't recommend it.
Ooh. But don't be nervous. I'm not gonna tease you.
Yeah, what do you want, just a?
Consensus.
Consensus.
And then one other item under old business, I don't know if you noticed Sarah's email about the urban exemption, the properties up here along the river, initially, they come out based on Home State Bullinville requested, and then the board had talked about adding in the fire station lot and the park lot. Basically, since we've already got the permits for the improvements of the park at this point, and we're trying to resolve the fire station lot issue by trying to get some additional acreage from Southwest County Services, she feels that the application to Mill, which is kind of what prompted this, would probably be a stronger application if we cut out the other two of those small properties, so I'll be looking for the consensus to, just to focus on the, on Set Four and all that.
It's okay with me, I just threw it out there, it's a shocking approach, but we're gonna do it, we're gonna do it.
Yeah. Just harder, especially if, like, the park, which currently they can show it historic, historic development, that there's not, there's not buildings approaching on the river now, so that one, I think, will come to be a tough one for them, so.
When would we come back? With the park and with the other side of the river?
If something came up, that we were trying to do something where the permitting is problematic, I think that's a good time to approach it. I think with the excess acreage, I really don't think this would give us any benefit of the fire station lot, it's pretty much tapped out at this point anyway, but in the park, I think we can work around, I think we can work around limitations on that lot.
It's got to tell you that the Southwest Regional Planning in Group Ten is
Top project for the region, yes.
He wanted that mentioned in the minutes.
Yes, three. Yes, I did hear that, three news. It's good to have him back on the board.
Good week to have an eye on the list.
All right, yeah, no, it's her. Dennis had a tough week.
Yeah, three instances?
Uh, two.
And one, we're drawing one for. West one?
West Malibu.
Oh, west one.
I thought there were three on Group Ten.
What's that?
Yeah, two miracles. We had three sizes, right?
I'm sorry?
We had two.
I thought it was three. Because I thought.
Oh, Friday night, they had one, right.
We're on the dump.
That was Friday night?
Oh, no.
Yeah, Friday night.
Because then they had the tractor trailer, the block all lanes, and then you had the fatal. So.
Didn't affect me, I fly with no road. We have our own challenges.
Very safe road.
Oh, well, actually.
You had a pole head over there.
Yeah.
A few long ago last week.
Yeah, oh, God, yeah. Had a couple of them, yes. We actually had somebody
Okay.
That came whipping through.
What is it?
For A.
Twelve, age twelve.
For promotions?
That, make a, what's that? Make a motion, we go in under A.
As long as we close off the camera, I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded.
Goldie.
Aye, that was very.
Here's in C.